This conference will now be recorded.
A couple of housekeeping things we need to do, so I'm going to go ahead and just dive into it. And I can open up for, for questions after. But real quick, I want to take a moment to acknowledge Jessica Nash. Jess has moved on. She got a new job closer to home and she seems very happy. So I'm wishing her the best and, and hoping she does well on her new track. So I was just, I was just about to talk about the mayor, but now he's here. So I gotta.
So we can't talk about it?
I gotta, we gotta, I gotta, I gotta change some of the wording here. Welcome. Thanks for coming. Um, you have good timing, actually. I was just getting into our chair report. So I'm, I'm really happy with what we've been able to do on planning. But I actually, Brian and I met with the, the mayor. It was last week, I think. Yeah, it was last week. And it turns out that we've kind of used up quite a bit of our, our budget for using Ethan and Alec. We, we kind of used up the entire year's budget in July. So we hit that point in July. And I don't, I don't blame, there's no one to blame in this room. But you know, we've had the comprehensive plans. We've had a lot of code changes from the state. And, and they also, I think you guys have done a great job of easing the path for like newer planning commissioners. For that, I thank you, Ethan. And if Alec was here, he also took it easy on us. So what I, what we discussed in our meeting is to try to streamline what we do in these meetings. I, we need to use Ethan where he's in his team are strong, the code and the laws. And I think things related to aesthetics and feasibility and like capturing the essence of what folks in La Center want, fall on the, the commission. And I think Ethan, you've, you've said that in different ways throughout the process. So in the, in the past, we would, we would kind of get a first look at code. We would ask for a draft. We'd ask for some research. We might send Ethan and Alec for some homework. And so what I'm hoping to do, and we can't do this on everything, I recognize. But what I, what I'd like to see if we can do as a team in the future is we'll have Ethan and Alec get us a first look and a draft of the code in the first meeting when they present something to us. And then by the second meeting, I would like to have had us review the code, maybe offline, maybe an email here or there, without breaking things in the quorum. And then in that second meeting, we can discuss, you know, adoption or passing on it or adjustments. And I will admit, in this regard, there was a couple of things that were like near and dear to my heart with density and things like that. And as the chair, I should be a bit more neutral. But I know with the front setback codes, I could have probably just had us vote on it. I think, you know, we had discussed it quite a bit. And I, and I thought like, maybe if we had more info on it, it would be more appealing. And so I need to take my personal notions out of the equation so that we can just, just move things forward. So just going forward, you know, in a perfect world, we'll take a first look and a draft. And in that second meeting, we'll have the public hearing discuss and then try to see if we can adopt or not. And then I'm just going to employ some, some of the, the tricks and Robert's rules of order to keep our meetings moving along quicker. And, and again, I'm like really happy with what we've done as a planning commission. And Ethan, this is obviously not a poor reflection on, on you or Alec in any way. Just, you know, they, they also told me I had to give back the jet. So it's just a, just, I, I lost out too. I'm kidding about that. This is, so.
This is recorded.
Yes. So that's the end of my chair report. I should, in all fairness, I should just open up maybe two comments if anyone has anything. And hopefully that's okay with you guys.
Well, I guess my comment would, I, my focus has always been on making sure that we get code that makes sense. If it doesn't make sense to me, I'm going to push back.
Absolutely, absolutely. And you should.
And that may take more than one or two meetings.
Sure. We'll just, we'll do our best to keep it concise as possible. We'll try to keep the comments a little bit limited. And then if we need to do something offline, again, keeping with the rules of the forum, we could do some of that stuff with Brian offline or send revisions and email or something like that.
So what does it mean that we have exceeded the budget? Are we done for the year?
Um, that's a good question. I, what we had.
We're sending Ethan home right now, so.
Yeah.
No, what it means is that we have to process a budget amendment. And I think that's going to council tomorrow. But basically we have to expand the budget that we had projected this year. And you know, the planning commission work's been a piece of the work. There's, there's also been, you know, the planning projects, specific project review that, that Ethan and his group do as well. But we're sort of over budget in all categories, essentially. You know, those being tied to specific projects. And we've had a few more of those than we projected this year. But the, the planning commission support task item is also over budget. And that's where, you know, all the work with, with you folks comes in here. So I think I just would also tack on that, you know, really the role of the planning commission here is policy guidance and providing their recommendation to the city council. And I know in the past, things were a little bit different and the commission was really in the weeds and working hands-on, you know, drafting specific code language. But really that's not a typical role of a planning commission. A typical role is, you know, reviewing what staff brings forward, giving feedback on that. And then having staff go back, you know, go back to the drawing board, make adjustments based on the planning commission's comments, you know, any public input we receive, basically the direction of the planning commission, bringing that back to the planning commission for, you know, a thumbs up or any sort of final tweaks to capture the essence of what the planning commission is recommending. And then we take that forward to council for their ultimate review and approval. So, you know, suffice to say, I think it's a little bit of a shift from, from past practices. And it's been sort of a slow evolution. I know we had didn't, in the past, didn't have WSP. We didn't have staff necessarily that, you know, had planning background. Sharon mentioned that Jessica is no longer serving in the capacity. We're actually changing that position to be an associate planner position. So looking to hire someone that actually has a planning background and some planning experience. So hopefully you'll see someone here at our next meeting, if we can get interviews and everything completed. But you know, really, again, it's, we're just trying to shift a little bit to a more traditional model now that we have the staff capacity and the, the ability to do that.
Well, I'm confused, Brian. What is the traditional model?
Well, I think if you look at your planning commission charter, it talks about that the planning commission is a policy advisor. So again, it's policy advisement is what we're looking from you as a, as a board.
How is that different to what we're doing now?
I think it's just a few levels up. I mean, and not to say that, you know, it's the case on every code. But I know on some specific codes, you know, there's been a lot of wrangling over, you know, specific language and words. And so we just really want to kind of take a couple of steps up and look at it more from the, you know, the 10,000 foot level or the 5,000 foot level.
I, I'm still confused because who is going to do the detail work that gets presented to the city council?
Staff.
Then you don't need us.
Well, we do, we need your policy recommendations, so.
I'm going, let me take this offline with you. Maybe, maybe afterwards, Brian and you, Dennis, we can sit down and hash it out.
And that, that may be different than, I mean, if that's the way you guys want to work it, fine. When I came on the city council, Greg had a very different approach. He wanted us to come forward with detailed recommendations to the city council. In fact, we were, we were developing code. You know, we, we'd take a section of code and one of us or a group of us would go research it, write it, bring it back and present it to the city council with the support of our contract planner. And frankly, I've been disappointed that we aren't doing that because that's what I thought was really interesting about this job.
Well, we can definitely have a conversation after the meeting here.
Yeah.
And be happy to do so.
Yeah, and I'll use my privilege to. Yeah.
The mayor was asking me to chime in with how much over budget we are. And I may have to turn to Ethan because I don't remember the specifics on this task.
And actually, I'll use my privilege too. Mayor Tom, if you want to say, say anything, please. Sure? Do you want to switch spots? Okay. It's good to have you, by the way.
These are round numbers, but I think the overall WSP budget for all services this year originally was 225,000. And we're adding another 150 to get us through the year. And that, you know, that's again, all tasks, but, and round numbers.
But we were at 240,000 to start the year and we're adding 170.
Okay, apparently you don't listen to me.
Yeah, thereabouts.
And this is a big year. I mean, we've got the comp plan. I assume that's taking a good piece of that.
Yeah, and it's not just planning commission. I mean, city council uses WSP services as well. But you know, Dennis, speaking to your point, and we should really close this up because we've got a lot to do. It, it might put more, it might put a little bit more back on our plate if we do some of that, some of the research offline or if we do some of the, you know, I know at times we've had Ethan say, hey, what is, what's Ridgefield doing? I mean, we could, we could maybe take that on ourselves too. So there might be some things we can take back, you know, and not, keep you guys focused on the, on the things that I know I can't do.
One of the things I think has been important for us as far as WSP is the fact, for example, looking at the comprehensive plan, we recognize really on that a very large portion of the comprehensive plan is, is been driven by state changes at the state level. Those are things that we're really unfamiliar with. And so I look at WSP to fare that out and bring that to us. And, and for example, if we say this is a document here that represents the comprehensive plan, they wouldn't be able to document it or easy for us that says, these are mandated. We don't need to spend any time on those. Here are the things that we need to fare those out of there, give us a couple of guidelines. And then as Dennis says, let us run with that and try to come up with some language that we think we could sell to council. But I think it's been working very well. I think anything, like anything else, we could probably tighten, tighten up. And so, but I think that we don't want to lose the ability to have a WSP family or a group there give us the guidance that we need. That's, that would be my concern if somehow we're moving in that direction. I think that's, that's an error for the city. We don't have anyone on staff, Brian, you know, on staff that, that can do this. You're not going to bring, bring anybody on quickly that's going to know all this stuff either.
Yeah, and again, just to reiterate, the intent is not to pull WSP out of the process. It's just really to try and make the, the meetings and the processing of code a little bit more efficient. You know, something like the FEMA code, you know, again, it's sort of a mandated code. We've had several of these state mandated codes. There's maybe a little bit of input or, you know, a couple of choices. But something like that should be able to come through in two meetings, you know, and get to the city council for their review. You know, something that's a little bit more complex or maybe has, you know, some more decision points, maybe three meetings. But we shouldn't be taking more than that to, to review code.
Situation, which I wasn't aware of that. But knowing that, I think we as a commission can put that into the mix and know that when we're talking about things, we can make sure that we're kind of balancing that, you know, is this something we want to spend some money on there? Or we want to spend it here? Or we want to do it here? We're freebies. And so I think having that awareness of the budget situation is good for us. And I think that'll help us probably shrink down perhaps the amount of effort and time that we're asking WSP to spend on our behalf. So I'm glad to see us move forward on it. Not that we're over budget, I'm not happy about that, but we're making progress this year. And I think we need to continue to press on in that same way. But as you say, different mindset.
Yeah.
I think we can do that, don't you?
Yeah, you know, and no one's, no one's, you know, opinion or expertise is going to be stifled. I'm, we're just going to ask that it's just brought forward faster and more concise. That's all. It'll force us to be like Twitter users or something. You get 140 characters.
Are you okay with that? Is that what we're talking about? Is that, would you okay?
I mean, I would agree with what Brian and Sharon have stated and that we're going to do our best to bring forward the key questions and policy issues for you to consider. And we will bring to you, you know, for instance, in a code update, as Brian was saying, we'll bring forward to you a code that's as complete and we think approvable as possible. Give you a chance to look at it, you know, make one round of revisions and then come back with something that we think is, is 100%. So that's kind of what our goal is.
You can work with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'll reiterate again, we definitely do appreciate the work you do.
Absolutely.
So, all right, I'm going to go ahead and move on. We, we currently have public hearings open. I might need some guidance. I believe all three public hearings are still open. We never closed any of them. And so at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing for the MDR 16 density transfer code update.
The public hearings are all open, so you don't have to reopen them.
That's right. So we'll, we'll, we'll allow anyone then that's virtually attending to, to speak up on it then.
Yeah, so you'll take the, you'll, I'll give the staff reports. And then you'll accept public comment in the, in the public hearing that's already open.
Okay.
And then probably close the public hearing and make a recommendation after that.
All right, were we going to batch the recommendations at the end of the public hearings? Or should we just tackle them one by one as we? Because we have three of them.
Right, one by one at the end of each item.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think logistically, that's probably going to be better.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and have you roll into that, Ethan, then?
Yeah, so the first item we're going to be talking with you about tonight is the MDR 16 density transfer code update. And this is one that we've been talking to you about for several months now. And the planning commission chose to open a public hearing last month to allow for further consideration. There were some questions from Commissioner Nutbrock. We've made some changes to the code in response to your comments last month. The code is largely the same. But I'll talk to you about some of the changes that have happened. And the changes are highlighted for you in the memo to hopefully call those out for you. But just to kind of refresh your memory a little bit on what this code update is about, we're trying to remove some of the barriers for folks to develop, you know, specifically in the MDR 16 zone. And, but to incentivize building in both the MDR 16 and LDR 7.5 zones. And that has to do with the density transfer where we're trying to sort of level the playing field a little bit more and allow developers to transform, transfer more density out of critical areas than they can currently. And that, that helps promote development in those zones and helps make it more feasible for them to develop. So I'm not going to talk a lot about sort of like the background of this project because we have talked about it before. That's there in the memo for you. But I'd really like to focus the time here primarily, my, my staff report primarily on talking to you about what has changed since last time. And so if you look at page 21 of the, of the planning commission packet. Yeah, of this PDF, yeah. Okay, let's see. This doesn't look like mine did. Let me see if I can find this.
There's like 21 of the PDF and then 21 of the packet. Yeah, like.
So my, my packet, planning commission packet has 157 pages in it. This looks, that one only has 43, I'm not. One moment.
On page 21 of mine, I've got parking spaces, though.
Yeah, so there should be a definition of dwelling, a single family there. And so we've revised that definition. There we go.
Yeah, we saw mine, it's on page three of 43.
Okay.
Dwelling, where it says the definition includes townhouses and.
Right.
Or row houses.
Yep, we've revised that definition of dwelling attached to include townhouses and row houses. And then in 18.
Can I see that? Can you scroll up? Because that wasn't in the package that was sent out.
Oh, that's in the definitions.
Well, just let me see the definition on the next page for, oh, that's single family.
I think he's looking for the definition of dwelling, a single family, right? Scroll down, one more page. There we go. You're wanting to look at the definition of attached, right?
Yeah. Okay, so that's different than the package we sent out. The other, again, I won't risk commenting here, but I don't understand why we mentioned ADUs. First of all, we don't have definitions for, for ADUs, which is kind of strange. And that, that becomes regulatory. You know, the definition for ADUs here is regulatory and shouldn't be in the definitions.
Yeah, I think that the intent here is just really, even though it sounds like a regulation to, to define what a detached dwelling unit includes, you know, which could include an accessory dwelling unit. So in that case, I think it's definitional.
Well, we ought to have a definition for ADU, which we don't.
Yeah.
Which I, I was surprised that we didn't have it since we went through all that work on ADUs. But I'd, I mean, AD, mentioning ADUs here really has nothing to do with single family detached. We ought to have, if we needed a definition for ADUs, we ought to put it in there and then take it out of here.
Is it, is it something that's just defined by the state and it's just a known quantity?
We've got, we've got a whole chapter on ADUs. I was just surprised that we didn't have a definition, definition chapter for accessory dwellings.
I feel like we can find a definition of ADUs easily enough and put it in here.
Oh, yeah.
So we put the motion and we could just include adding, add definition of ADUs.
Exactly, keeping our eye on that ball. We can add that to the motion or you can add that to the motion.
And then the, go back to the dwelling, dwelling duplex, duplex definition. Oh, right there. You know, this, I don't understand why we need that because this is just a subset of multifamily. And in multifamily, you already say that it includes duplex, triplex and fourplexes. So, you know, I think at one time there was a need for that definition. But now it's just a subset of multifamily and really is redundant and could be deleted.
I don't think it's redundant because there's different forms of multifamily, right? This being one specific form of that. So I think the way it's stated right now is probably adequate. Somebody might make the argument that that definition, you know, similar to what we're doing with single family detached, we could put this definition underneath multifamily.
Well, it is, it's already there. You say, under multifamily, you say, this definition includes apartments, duplexes, triplexes and fourplexes.
Right, that's just a reference to what those are, but doesn't define what that is. Because this tells you that duplexes, triplexes and fourplexes are, you know, and then it goes on to state what it is. Means a building, single lot containing two, three or four individuals dwelling units, blah, 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 blah.
Okay, so you say the same thing in the next one. So I, that's fine. In the interest of moving things along, oh. It's in the ADU code? I didn't look there. I looked in definitions.
Okay, so the other thing I wanted, one of the other changes I wanted to bring your attention to was in the LDR 7.5 code, which is in LCMC 1813080. And I'll see if I can find a page number for you on that one, if we can get that matched up so that you can, so we can all be on the same page. This would be page 46 of 157 of my packets, thereabouts.
This is in the LDR code?
Yeah, 1813080. So I think scrolling down a little bit more, Alec, or sorry, Alex. Keep going. Yeah, one, one more page, I think it is. There we go. So we've inserted. Yeah. One, one more page, I think it is. There we go. So, um, we've inserted density range caps there. And that, you know, is sort of part and parcel of the density transfer revision work that we did. And so what this says is that the maximum net density for single family detached shall be 5.8 units per net acre, which is basically you just take a net acre and divide it by 7,500 square feet, which is the minimum lot size in the LDR 7.5 zone. And you come up with 5.8 units per acre. And then for duplexes, um, same thing, you take a net acre and you divide it by 10,000 square feet because the minimum lot size for duplex lots is 10,000 square feet. Um, and then you multiply by two and you come up with 8.7 units per acre. So this really isn't changing anything in particular about the LDR 7.5 zone. Um, in terms of how it would develop, it's just stating the inherent, um, density ranges or, or cap, sorry, that are already a part of this, of this code. So this would not change the density that is allowed. It's just based upon the already existing minimum lot sizes for detached and duplexes.
What, what's the density then for triplexes and fourplexes?
Well, so I don't think that those would be allowed, right? In the LDR 7.5 zone.
Oh, this is, you're right.
All right. So moving on. The product mix requirement in the MDR 16 zone, and this is on page 37 of my packet. Keep scrolling down Alex, right in on item four on this page. Oh, it is. We're having such trouble with the pages here.
I think the packet was broken up.
Yeah. We have an attachment number.
Yeah, it's, it is item four there. Um, and, and so what this says is that the product type mixing requirement that, that's states that, in the MDR 16 zone, that you have to have no more than 75% of one product type. Applies to projects which consist of 15 gross acres or more. There was some discussion about that last time about whether it was should be 10 or 20, and we've kind of gone back and forth on that. So we kind of split it down the middle and chose, um, 15 acres there. So just wanted to call that change out for you.
Yeah, I, I still think that's too large. You know, I believe this provision is in here to facilitate lower price point homes. And to, you know, to meet the affordability criteria that's in the comp plan. And I mean, if, if we are really serious about that, we ought to enforce that, that split in product type on, on smaller developments. I came in, I'm going to suggest 10. Cause I think that's one of the, one of the few ways we have of forcing developers to address, you know, a different product type, which generally leads to, you know, apartments or duplexes, triplexes. And if you increase it to 15, you're, you're losing that opportunity. Opportunity that you could have had on smaller lots.
We can form the motion with 10. I mean, there's nothing to keep us from just making it 10.
Yeah, that, that would be my recommendation. That would be an example of a policy issue that the planning commission, you know, would, would be right to think about. So, uh, it would be appropriate, I think, to make a motion on, on that particular item. In terms of the technical work that sort of backs this up, I don't think these are exactly magic numbers. But just as a point of reference, the Peterson property, which is up off of, Pacific highway here next to Riverside is maybe about six and a half or so acres. The other, um, areas that would be subject to this would be the MX zone out in Timon Landing because the MX zone incorporates the MDR 16, um, requirements for housing. And those areas are, you know, well in excess of, of 15 acres. If you take the whole thing and some of the individual properties add, add up to about 15 acres.
And on the Peterson property, they were able to come up with a configuration that met that criteria on six and a half acres.
I, I would go for 10 myself. So, I mean, I mean, you know, if you guys are amenable, we can just formulate the motion with 10.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. All right. Cool.
All right. So that was it in terms of the changes I wanted to call out.
Can you, can you scroll up just to?
Yeah.
This page. The question there, the, the top highlighted section, multifamily developments would be subject to record, setback requirements of the table, including minimum side and rear setback requirements. I don't understand why that sentence is required.
That's because it's a product change, I'm assuming, and not, not that if you're change, if you're doing mixed development. It creates, I think we discussed a buffer or something to that effect.
Yeah, but the, the, the table has, if you look at the table above that, there's a minimum setback requirement. And it says for multifamily, uh, zero feet with, if you're from an attached or 10 feet from abutting, a single family detached. So I don't know why it's. I'm just confused by what you're trying to do there.
It's in the Beveling paragraph, right? Where we're talking about, reduced, or we're talking about lot sizes of MDR 16 projects that border single family residential projects. So it's basically just referring people back up to that table for the setbacks that would apply for multifamily that borders single family, right? Because the Beveling paragraph talks about alternative setbacks. But if you're in the MDR 16 zone, within the MDR 16 zone and you're bordering, you know, a single family detached residence, you need to know what those setbacks are, just to make it crystal clear.
Yeah. It'd make more sense to me to put that in the table, but that's, so you'd have all the requirements in one place, but that's fine.
Okay.
So I think that's it. In terms of the changes we wanted to call out for you. So our recommendation again is that you accept comments in the already open public hearing, um, close the public hearing and then forward a recommendation of approval to the city council on these code updates.
And we covered 1.71 in this discussion, but I think we jumped into 1.72. Or we haven't yet. I thought there was one item we'd.
1.72 is the front, the LDR front setbacks. I know these get a little bit confusing, but this is, we only talked about the MDR 16 and density transfer.
I think we had mentioned LDR in the MDR 16, just the.
Right.
Transfer. Okay.
Because the LDR zone is subject to revised density transfer provisions that are part of this MDR 16 code update.
Got it.
But we'll talk about front setbacks in the LDR 7.5 zone next.
Got it.
I got one more comment on the, uh, on 1814060. The title is requirements of multifamily attached housing. Attached shouldn't be there. We don't have a definition for multifamily attached. It's just multifamily, right?
I, I would agree with that.
In fact, it goes on parent apartment. So this is definition or the requirements for apartments. And, and you just use attached there in the title and the first sentence should be deleted.
What, um, what code was that next?
It's 1814060.
So in the version of the code I'm, or in the version of the packet that I'm looking at, it says requirements of multifamily housing.
Oh.
And attached is.
Yeah. Okay.
Gone.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Somehow the copy we're looking at is different than the copy you have.
Yeah, it seems there's some discrepancy. The copy that's posted online for the agenda packet is reflecting the, what Ethan's talking off of.
Must have changed because I pulled it right off the agenda.
I don't think it's changed since Jess posted it, but yeah, I'm not sure what happened.
Cause there's several other changes that I was going to comment on that had already been made.
Alex, do we have anyone virtually attending? In person? Okay. Anything else from commissioners here? Cause I was just going to see if anyone was ready to comment on the, um, what's contained in 1.71. So we have a, uh, just for those attending virtually, we currently have an open, uh, public hearing on 1.71, which is the MDR 16 density transfer code update. Anyone attending in person or virtually is free to make a comment up to three minutes. I used to law, I used to have the virtual meeting up to, but then it was just too many, too many things going on. There's like thirty more seconds there. Okay. I am hearing no public comment virtually. We have, do we have any in-person public commenters? Okay. Hearing no public comment. Uh, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing on, uh, agenda item 1.71, the MDR 16 density transfer code update. And from there, we, we could put forward a motion with, there's three changes. Well, actually maybe that third change, since there was a discrepancy in the packet is not needed anymore. But we have, uh, a potential for a motion, uh, for the changes as, as shown to us by staff with the addition of the ADU in a definition, which we will just use a.
We can transfer that or duplicate the definition in the ADU code.
Right. And then we can, um, go from 15 acres to 10 acres in the, gosh, you guys are going to keep me honest here.
MDR 16.
Yeah, the specific, I was trying to remember the specific, uh, density transfer. Thank you. But we don't need to reiterate the whole code. So i- is there, is there, I would entertain a motion for the approval of this code update from commissioners.
I'll make a motion here. Changes based on the changes that have been discussed.
Okay. We have a motion in a second and we can discuss if there's any discussion. Hearing no discussion. We can go ahead and vote. I'll give it one final chance for discussion. Okay. Um, all those in favor of, uh, passing the MDR density transfer code update with the two additions, um, suggested by Commissioner Nubrak, please say aye. Aye. I think I heard three. Commissioner Hill, myself and, uh, Commissioner Jones. Any nays?
Nay.
Okay. We have one nay and there are no extensions. All right. Motion carries. Thanks guys. I know that's, uh, that was a bit tricky. Moving on to 1.72, the LDR 7.5 front setback code update. We do have a public hearing currently open, but Ethan, if you can introduce your changes.
Yep. So this is another one of the code updates that planning commission voted to continue to this month for further consideration. Um, the purpose of this code update is to allow developers and builders to provide a greater variety of housing styles and sizes and more interesting street capes, streetscapes that mimic traditional neighborhood design. Um, and the way that they would do that is providing, um, an enhanced level of architecture in exchange for being able to reduce the front setbacks, um, to as little as 12 feet. And the basics of this particular code and the way it would work are that there would be two tiers of reductions possible. In the first tier of reductions, a developer or builder could decrease their front setback to 15 feet. When they meet a couple of conditions. The first condition is that the garage, um, would be set back at least five feet from the front facade. And the garage would be up to 50% of the front facade width. And, but the garage would have to be set back at least 20 feet from the front property line. So it could, you know, not be closer than that, um, no matter what. And then, uh, the developer or the builder would then select from a menu of items, which would be enhanced architectural treatments or design treatments. And this is on page 59, I believe, of the agenda packet, PDF page 59. See if that gets us there. Keep scrolling down. Keep going, keep going. Bottom of this page here, I believe. So this sets up the front setback reductions there in that item nine and how those work. And then, as I said, the developer, the builder could reduce to 15 feet. And by providing a certain number of items from this menu. So Alec, if, uh, sorry Alex, if you scroll down to the next page here. So if they provide five of the following priority features, on the front facade of the dwelling unit, bellyband cladding, dormers, pillars and posts made of contrasting material from the primary facade of the home and preferably made of brick, stone or other natural material. Knee or eve braces, window trim no less than three inches wide and/or keystones, decorative window trim on all street facing windows. Bay windows on at least 15% of the front facing facade, shutters or louvers. And then at least three color changes across the facade. So that'd be the list of, I think it's roughly seven or eight items there. They would have to achieve five that, and if, assuming they met, meet that, they would, could be granted a reduction down to 15 feet from 20 feet. And then to get to an additional three feet of setback reduction down to 12 feet, they would select four of the following additional secondary design treatments, a covered porch area at a minimum of 40 square feet. Variable sightings such as three or more changes in sighting texture, direction and materials. At least three varied plane breaks or exterior wall offsets. Front facing garage doors with windows on no less than 15% of the garage door. Recessed building entry of at least three feet. Use of contrasting materials such as brick, stone on no less than 30% of the facade. Um, and I think there's one more, which is basically another, um, architectural treatment that's not listed there, but it can't count for more than one of the, it count, can't count for more than one item. So you can't come up with four things that aren't listed there or even two things. You could only come up with one thing that's not listed there. So that's basically how the code is structured. I'll walk through with you just a couple of the more significant changes that we made since the last time. Going to the top of the prior page, Alex. Keep going up actually. So this is actually a footnote that you're seeing here to, um, the table above. That tells you what the setbacks have to be. And we cleared up some of this language. This is existing language that tells you what can project into a front setback area. And it's things like cornices, eaves, belt, courser, sills, canopies, bay windows. Um, and it goes on to talk about porches and decks. Um, and there was some language in here that indicated that a deck and a porch could project 10 feet into the front setback. Since we're proposing in this code to reduce the front setback. Since we're proposing in this code to reduce the front setbacks, we didn't want people to be able to go 10 feet more, right? Because you can have it under this code, if it's adopted and approved, you could have potentially have a front setback that is 12 feet. This, if it was interpreted, you know, in a certain way, it would suggest that somebody could go could have a deck that's at two feet, right? Because that's an additional 10 feet into the front setback. So we changed that to say that that the the deck and the porch as well could could project up to 10 feet from the front property line. So you still can't go closer than 10 feet from the front property line with the deck or the porch. Which is, by the way, which is seemed to be the intent of the code as it was there, but we just didn't want any confusion to say that you could project an additional 10 feet into that into that front setback. Another change that we made in this version is that you might remember that the garage was required to be set back an additional eight feet behind the front facade. We reduced that to five feet. And the reason that we did that is that we're giving developers and builders flexibility on the rear setbacks. So you could have a garage that's set back 15 feet from the rear property line now instead of 20 feet from the rear. So that basically allows them to push the garage back five feet in the front and then five feet in the back. So those two numbers are equal. You know, which matches up. And then that sort of gives them the flexibility they need to to be able to push the garage back five feet in the front, which, again, the purpose of that is to de-emphasize the garage as compared with the rest of the house. And then finally, we've added provision, Alex, if you don't mind scrolling down a couple more pages here. There you go, I think on that page right there. So there's two review tracks that we've set up for this. One review track is for people or developers and builders. There's two review track A, it says there that they provide this information at the time of preliminary subdivision or short plat. A site plan that indicates which lots are subject to the reduced front yard setback requirements. And then elevations of the buildings that are utilizing the reduced front yard setback. And then a checklist of the priority and secondary features to be used so that when it comes in for billing permit review, the building official knows exactly what features they're supposed to be looking for. Or review track B would be at the time of billing permit submittal, they would provide the items I just mentioned up above there in in B and C. And then then they could do it at that at that time. So basically, they're probably the elevations in the checklist at the time of building permit. The thing I wanted to point out to you in this that we changed this time, Alex, if you'll scroll up just a tiny bit here. In that item A, under review track A there, there was a discussion at the last Planning Commission meeting and you you said, well, we kind of want to see how all of this relates across the whole development. And so we decided that the sort of simplest and I think maybe the most effective thing to do. You you had expressed a concern that, you know, you might get this kind of incoherence across an entire development. And so you might have a handful of houses or maybe even one house that's projecting forward to 15 or 20 feet. Sorry, 15 or 12 feet. And the rest of the houses are at 20 feet and it would look completely out of place. So we've added this provision in here that says that if you're going to read that if you're going to use those reduced front yard setbacks, the front setback can't be more than five feet forward of the houses on lots next to it on the same side of the street. So you don't get this kind of like just dramatic difference on just one house. They have to kind of take into account the the adjacent houses. So I think that that's pretty much it. We did want your input and I'm gonna maybe ask Brian to chime in here a little bit, but we did want your input specifically on the list of priority and secondary features in this. And there was some discussion at the staff level about this. But the basic differences between the priority and the secondary lists, as you see them now, in the priority list, you have the things that are a little bit easier to achieve. And in the secondary list, you have the things that are harder to achieve. So it's it gets progressively harder, the way the code is set up right now. It gets progressively harder for them to go from from 15 feet to 12 feet than it was to go from 20 feet to 15 feet. I think an argument could be made either way on that, and that's something that we wanted your input on. Should it be more difficult for them to go from 20 feet to 15 feet than it is to go from 15 to 12? Or should it be the other way around? Right now, it's the other way around. A little bit easier to get to 15 feet, quite a bit harder to get to 12 feet. That's the end of my staff report on that, but would appreciate your input on that question.
Yeah, I'll open it up. Thoughts, anyone?
One of the things that I think that somewhat prompted this was the issue we had up here part of the city here where the builder came back to us and asked for a number of variances. Because they they said they couldn't put the number of lots, it couldn't be the number of houses that they wanted on the lots without these variances. I guess my concern is looking at this and this here, too, is that is this going to open it up as we move forward into a new development? Is this automatically going to give all the new builders the opportunity to do less setbacks than we have than we have in our normal in our normal building code? Is that exactly what's going to happen here going forward? We aren't going to see the setbacks that are that are progress of our community, but we're now going to see a whole new set of setbacks which aren't really going to be consistent with our city and our code we have in place for 30 years.
Well, we can't tell how often people are going to use these. Right? So I don't know if I can answer that question directly, but yeah, builders and developers would have the opportunity to utilize this and reduce setbacks if they provide the architectural treatments that we've that we've talked about. The other thing I would would just mention, and I know that there's different opinions on the Planning Commission about this. But the other thing that I would just mention is that a number of jurisdictions are kind of switching to this approach. They tend to be more urbanized jurisdictions. But having that front facade more forward is seen as a desirable thing, de-emphasizing the garage and the driveway, which a lot of people think is the least attractive part, you know, of a house and and residential design. So that's the idea here. We did, and I know you've I've showed you these pictures before, but we did attach the pictures, you know, from some communities that that we thought serve as good examples here. And it's really kind of promoting that, again, porch forward emphasis on the front door and the front facade and encouraging traditional neighborhood design like you might have seen in the, I don't know, maybe the the 20s through the 1950s, where you had the garage detached, pushed back. Maybe you had the garage accessible from an alley instead of from the street. We're not mandating any kind of alley requirements, but we're trying to achieve that same kind of aesthetic by de-emphasizing the garage. So that's that's kind of the the some of the thoughts and that we've put forth before about this issue. And so, again, like, we're interested in hearing your thoughts on it as well.
I guess just to tack on to what Ethan said, too, there's also been several studies that have shown, you know, that we frequently get complaints of. We have neighborhoods and we have kids playing in the streets and playing in the sidewalks and we have complaints of speeding. And having these, you know, relatively wide roads with then relatively far setbacks makes the area feel more open and people intuitively, you know, feel like it's more open and speed. So there's been numerous studies that have shown that by sort of bringing things in a little bit closer, it visually sort of narrows the corridor and helps people go at a more appropriate speed. So that's sort of a side benefit of this. There are other ways to do that. Reduction as well.
There's other ways to do that. You can do curb bump outs or pushouts for sidewalks.
Yeah, there's numerous techniques.
There's lots of ways to do that.
Any other comments? And if you guys want to, don't forget to comment if you have an opinion on the the parameters for actually getting approval for 15 versus 12.
Well, you know, I've I've spent quite a bit of time walking through a couple neighborhoods. And you can walk through hillside estates or riverside, and you can see a lot of these features already being incorporated. So I'm not sure we're incentivizing developers to do anything that they aren't already doing. And that was certainly enforced by the the comment in here from the building, the city's building official. You know, I were you finished, Dennis? I didn't. You know, I I I remain very much opposed to this. If I think it's going to make contractors will come in and take advantage of this because they want to put bigger homes on these lots. And we're going to significantly and fundamentally change the the complexion of our LDR residential zone, which are more open for their setback. And I, you know, if you if you want that kind of development, that's what MDR is for. We got a 10-foot setback. You know, if you if you want to have that kind of dense environment, you go build an MDR. That's not what is in our LDR zones, and I don't think we ought to be changing that. You know, you know, it's nice to say we're going to make it more walkable, but we're not changing the sidewalks. You're still walking on the same sidewalks. You're going to in in help with interaction neighbors. I've got probably a 60-foot setback and I can still interact with my neighbors because I'm like on the street. I have neighbors that never come out. So if you move the porch closure to the sidewalk, I don't think you're going to change the inherent interaction that people are going to have. I view this as strictly a a bone to developers so they can put, you know, the product they want on these lots. And I don't think we should be doing that.
That's good comments, and I know we've drilled deep into this one. Is there anyone on Planning Commission that would have a favorable opinion to this code? I'm not looking at it.
As we work at it, I probably lean toward doing that. I appreciate hearing your perspective there because that it does. It does give some other ways of looking at it, but but I did appreciate the sense and that the look and the sense of community that the porch forward type of development would could provide. Kind of going back, you you once were asking about, should things be more difficult? If they got any closer, I think it should be more difficult, you know, than if it's forward a little bit. But I think the if the more far forward it goes, the more difficult it should be because I think we don't want to really push a lot forward, but have have that potential. Maybe may maybe a a bit of a compromise might be the sense of not provide for being able to get any closer than 15 and just allow 15 to be the closest that it could be. I just want to reiterate or or confirm garages, no matter what, are always going to be at least 20 feet, if not more.
That's correct.
And and which and I I, too, would agree that we don't want anything closer garage-wise and further back or the side. In our subdivision, there's a lot of side garages. You know, and so the front appearance is really quite attractive. So my leaning would be approval. And but if it got closer, it needs to be more difficult. Or I'll raise the standard.
All right, any other? Other comments?
Well, I again, I'll I'll restate my my concern is that I really think that we as a city need to continue to press builders coming into our city to use and existing code regarding all setbacks. However, there are going to be situations, unique situations where a builder would come in and say, I've got a unique situation on this lot for whatever reason, 100 reasons, and ask the city for an exception, a devia- a variance on this particular situation. And I and I think that's appropriate. I think we should do that. We should be willing to to work with the builder or developer in that sense. But to me, I think what we're doing here, as I say, is giving them an opportunity to increase their pocketbook. We are. They're going to have the same level, same piece of property, but they can put much more on it because we are allowing these setbacks. That's money in their pockets. That's money that's going to cost the the builder, it's going to cost the new owner. And so is that what we're all about? Is that what we want to do? So how make it easier, better for them as a developer builder to come in and build bigger homes on smaller on small properties? I don't think so. And I think if you went out and talked to the neighbors in the neighborhoods and gave them the story, they'd say, no, we are not to be doing that. Stop pushing us closer together. Yeah, okay, yeah, push, you know, push close to the street. Let's put us closer together. Give us space. And again, this code would have been working in the city for a long time. And I think being aware of the fact that there are variances occasionally, I think, and we've done that. We've gone overboard. In fact, the city has gone overboard in that regard in the last several years here. I think we've just we've just allowed builders to basically dictate what they want to do. We say, yea, verily, press on. We don't need to learn a lesson from it.
So if so if were there any comments on if this motion would be brought forward? Any thoughts on the difficulty before or after? You know, do you do you make it harder to get to the 15 than easier to get to the 12? Or the way it is now might be irrelevant to you guys? Okay. I think at this time, we should just go ahead and see if I think there was a public comment for 1.72, if I'm not mistaken. Oh, it's the next one, the FEMA update? Okay. At this time, is there anyone attending virtually that would like to comment on this? The public hearing on this has been open since last month. I'm not hearing any. Is there anyone attending physically that would like to make a public comment on this? We should have you on we should have you on mic, just so. Yeah, just so it's on the record, sorry.
Tom Strubin, 1987, East Hyman Circle, the center of Washington. On the rare occasion that Commissioner Hill and I do agree on some things, this is one of them. Though, sitting in the position that I am, I do get to see these builders coming up and presenting, and I just attended one a week ago, two weeks ago. And there was a lot of issues. And if you can streamline a process to make it easier to get through instead of having to come back for variances after variance, after variance, I think would be more beneficial to the city. So appreciate it.
Thanks, I we had no one virtually with a comment. We did have, thank you, Mayor Tom, for your comment. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing on this. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to accept these code changes as written by staff.
I will move.
Okay, and I'll go ahead in a second. And then I'll open up discussion. Um, and then I'll open up discussion. Any, any last discussion on this?
Well, yeah, if, um, if this code was to go forward, I think there are several issues with it that would need to be addressed. You know, I'm not going to try to address those because I don't want to take everybody's time. But there are, I think there are issues with the code. Aside from the, I don't think we ought to be doing it, but just in the code itself, if you read it, there are issues there.
Any other comments? I'm going to go ahead and call the question, and I will just do a roll call just to make it easier for you. And I, it's not to put anyone in those spots, just to make it easy because, uh, so let's go ahead and do a roll call, but I'll start, Commissioner Nuprock?
No.
Commissioner Hill?
No.
Uh, I'll abstain. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
So we have two noes, one abstention, one yes.
Can I ask why you abstained?
He would have forced the tie. Yeah, so the motion fails. Um, I appreciate all the work staff has done on that. We'll, uh, maybe if it becomes more of a pressing issue, it'll come back around. All right. So thanks, thanks, you guys. I know that was, that was tricky. That was a tricky one, and we've spent a lot of time on that. Appreciate the hard work everyone's put into that one. Uh, moving on to 1.73, um, this is another code update that we currently have a, um, uh, public hearing open on, but let me pass it over to Ethan to, to kind of get us up to speed on that.
Thank you. So this was an item that was first presented to you back in July. Um, and there's kind of two basic components of this update. There are going to be updated FEMA flood insurance rate map panels. And those are the map panels that show where's the special flood hazard areas are in the center. And so, uh, there's the map component of this, and then there's the code component of it. The city is obligated to update its code to comply with the most recent National Flood Insurance Program standards that are contained in federal code in order to maintain flood insurance. Um, and so the graphic that Alex is showing you on the screen here is showing you what the differences would be in the flood hazard areas. Um, the panel on the left, um, which, I apologize, these panels kind of got merged up. But I think with your familiarity of the geography of the center, you can see that the East Fork of the Lewis River is kind of the main flood hazard area there in the, in, you know, in the middle of the city that separates downtown from, uh, Timmin Landing. Um, there wouldn't be any changes there. Um, but if you go, if you go to the right, FEMA's new flood maps would pick up, pick up some new, um, area along, uh, the lower reaches of Breezy Creek, um, before it connects with the East Fork of the Lewis River. Um, and then even though it's outside the urban growth area, so we don't need to be super concerned about it right now, there would be a change, uh, in the area mapped along Lock Creek. Um, so what that means is that folks whose properties are located in that flood zone, and I do want to just mention that we gave special notice to the properties within the city there along Breezy Creek to let them know about this code update and these map changes. Um, so if they were to change or develop their properties, um, they would have to go, wi- within the special flood hazard area, which is the, the 100-year floodplain, they would have to go get a floodplain permit. Um, the advantage to them of this is that they're eligible for flood hazard insurance. So if there was a flood on Breezy Creek, um, at some point in the future that damaged their property, then they could, um, you know, draw on a flood insurance policy to help them sort of recoup, recoup some of the damage for that. Um, so that's essentially what this is about. There's a number of different code updates, um, kind of scattered throughout the critical areas ordinance that we've highlighted for you. Um, pretty much every single one of those is about compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program standards um, in the code of federal regulations. Um, the one exception to that, um, and I'll try and pick up a reference for you is with regard to something that's called a CLOMAR, um, which is a conditional letter of map revision. And so if somebody develops in the flood, floodway, um, they could apply for a conditional letter of map revision that would remap that area as no longer located within the floodways. So let me see if I can just find that, um, particular code reference for you. But that's the only optional component that we'd be updating in the code. Um, this go around. All right, one second, and I'll get there. So this would be page 135 of the packet, or of my packet at least. So, yeah, maybe we can zoom in on that. So this is on the prior page, the heading that we're talking about here is floodways and floodway requirements. And so this provision says, notwithstanding any other provisions of Title 44 CFR 60.3, and that's the National Flood Insurance Program. A community may permit encroachments within the adopted regulatory floodway that would result in an increase in base flood elevations, provided that the community, um, first applies for a conditional letter of map revision and floodway revision as established under the provisions of 6512, which is the CFR, and receive the approval of the federal insurance administrator. So basically, they're offering an opportunity for a community to change the mapping if, if they're going to apply for development in the floodway. Um, so really, that's the only optional standard, um, that, that is being updated in the code that, that we wouldn't necessarily need to include. But that includes some, that grants some flexibility to Le Center to change its flood hazard, floodway mapping. Um, we've gone over these changes with you before. Um, so I guess let us know if you have any questions on any of the particular standards. A lot of it is changes to, um, uh, definitions in the critical areas ordinance. Um, I did want to mention just really quickly that we did make a couple of changes based upon some comments that Commissioner Nuprock made at the July meeting. And those changes were to the definition of area of special flood hazard. Um, let me see if I can pick up that reference for you. So this would be page 98. Yeah, there's a definition of area of special flood hazard right there. And so there was a discussion about omitting the term or greater, or, or the phrase or greater there, which, if you remember, there was somebody from FEMA here named Suzanne Sarpong, who's a FEMA regional coordinator. Um, and she said she'd be okay with that, even though that didn't match up exactly with the, the CFRs. Um, and then the second change was to the definition of floodway.
I think that was a consistency change we did there.
One more. There we go, floodway. Um, and so you can see the change there highlighted in yellow. Um, and the, you know, so this defines the floodway. Um, and it says, uh, that it's the channel of a river or other water course in the adjacent land areas that must be reserved in order to discharge the base flood without cumulatively increasing the water surface elevation more than a designated height of one foot. It previously just said more, more than a, uh, more, more than one foot. And it didn't include, include a designated height, but that designated height is a mapped, um, height because it's, um, because Le Center's flood insurance rate map will contain elevation. So I think that that's what we're talking about there. Um, so I think that those were the two sort of key changes that we made. I guess one more maybe to call out would be immediately below that where it says floodway fringe. That's kind of an outdated term. So we've gone through the code and removed that now because it's now special flood hazard area, um, which includes the floodplain and the floodways. And that term floodway fringe has been expunged from the code. That's it. Let me know if you have any questions.
The definition of area of special flood hazard, I assume that's the SFHR, right, Ray?
SFHA, Special Flood Hazard Area?
Is that the same thing?
Yeah.
Because throughout the document, you're using the special flood hazard area. In fact, you use the def- the abbreviation SFHA, but that's never defined here specifically. So I wonder if this definition would be better to change to how you're using the term in the document.
Um, let's go back to the definition of area of special flood. Oh, it's right there, sorry. Um, I get a little bit squeamish in changing these things because they're directly from the CFR. I can see what your point is. Um, and so.
I mean, I went and looked for, I went and looked for special, um, special flood hazard area, and I couldn't find the definition.
Right. And that's really the way it should be stated here. Um, but the way that it is stated is directly from the CFR. So it's a little bit confusing, but I think it's probably adequately clear.
I think we discussed this at the last meeting, but most of these changes were driven by FEMA's staff reviewing our existing code and proposing specific changes so that we are eligible to have floodplain insurance offered in the city. Currently, our code is, uh, out of compliance, and we have been for about 10 years. So FEMA floodplain insurance or flood insurance is not currently available in the city. So really, the, all of these changes are at the behest of FEMA so that we can offer floodplain insurance.
Yeah, and that's, that's good. But when I, I look at code, as I've said many times, I look for consistency. And all through the document, you're using special flood hazard area or SFHA, but you never define it. Now, you could easily just put a paren there, SFHR, HA, to make it clear. I mean, I read the document.
FEMA's staff specifically cautioned us against monkeying with their definitions, so, for what it's worth.
I appreciate.
So we have two things on the table right now. We have, um, parts of the code that we really don't have a lot of say in, but we did clean up some of the, we did have some leeway, like on the one foot and getting rid of the more. I think Commissioner Nuprock had those suggestions. Do we have any issues with the comp, or the small changes we did to the code that we don't have any say in? I'll break this up into two pieces. All right, so I think we're good on that. So the second part was the, the, the one thing we did have a say in, which was the, um, it's like a million pages from where we were. Um, but you were about to say something.
I think, to me, this, 1.7.3 is a good example of where we can shrink the amount of time we're spending. Coming into this evening, Ethan, you and your team had the changes that we had previously discussed. And, and I really believe if you tell me that they've now been incorporated, I'd get thumbs up on that. I don't think there's any discussion required, except if, if Dennis is going through and looking like this example about what we call something, that could be, that could be transmitted to you outside of this meeting, or that could be, you know, that could be discussed in, in 38 seconds. This is, would you take a look at that and see if we can clean that up and make that more concise? 38 seconds and you're done. That doesn't require discussion. No one here, no one here wanted to discuss that. I, I believe what Dennis said. I, I go along with what he's saying. I think it's good, it's clean. But I think this is a good example of going forward. If we have given WSP, Ethan, direction that says, these are the changes we want to incorporate it, and you come back to us and say, I've incorporated it. I want to trust you that you've done that. I don't have any reason to go through and somehow nitpick it and say, well, you're close. If you tell me they're done, I believe you're done. And I don't think we need to spend any more time on it. And I think this is a good example, this particular one, not the other two items. But this one tickers is one that, as far as I'm concerned, other than what Dennis brought up, and that could be handled very quickly. This is, would you please take a look at that? Yes, needing, you move on. So, so that's, that's my point here. I think that sticks out real clear to me as, as that type of opportunity going forward, we can do that type of thing.
And, and I'll say to Commissioner Nuprock's, um, to his credit, he actually does a lot of things offline, but because of the quorum, you guys don't get to see it. So I, I get to see it, and I should probably find a way to report it back to you guys. But I, I know like on the parks memo, I, I know you had like a, like a good amount of changes, which I did review. And, and so Commissioner Nuprock does do a good job of that. But because of the quorum, he can't.
Appreciate that.
CC everyone. So with that in mind, if you guys are okay, I think the chain, that first set of changes, there's no flexibility. We really need to look at the language by FEMA and adopt it. And then if we could just go back, if you guys are okay with this, we go back to the one clause that we do have say in, which is the, the part that you added. That was like the first part of your walkthrough, Ethan. If we could just go to that and then maybe have a quick discussion on that and see if we can get a motion together for that.
I, I have one more comment on the FEMA code.
Uh, it was on that first part that, or on this next, the optional, I'll call it the optional.
Yeah, I'm not sure what, what you're talking about.
It's the CLOMAR.
Yeah, the CLOMAR. I, I wrote that down and then forgot to look at it.
Yeah, so this is the, this is the one thing that we, we do have some leeway, I think, is what you're saying, Ethan, if I'm not reading too deep.
Right. So the leeway would be to either include or not include this. But including it gives the city the flexibility to request a map change from FEMA on it, on its flood insurance rate maps.
And not having this would take away that flexibility from the city.
Right.
Any, any discussion?
So win-win. I think this was, it wasn't required discussion as far as I'm concerned.
Commissioner Nuprock, I think you may have, had, you said you had a comment.
None on that.
Oh, okay. Um, okay, so on this one, I think we're, are we okay here? So then let's go back to the other piece, Commissioner Nuprock. I, although I kind of closed it, but let's go ahead and address it.
Can, can you scroll down to the table?
Are you thinking about the table of uses?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, um, 18, 300.
040.
Page, starting on page 108.
Now, scroll up to the top of that page that, right there, okay, that's good. I think in that reference there, 13, 3300, that's probably got too many zeros in there.
Yeah, I should say 18.
330. And then down in the table, um, right there, that header, the outside the SFHA. So what happens if you're in an SFHA?
So the, I'm glad you're asking this question. So this is a table that FEMA said fundamentally doesn't line up with the National Flood Insurance Program. Because if you look at this, it has a number of exemptions in it that don't, you know, that would allow somebody to kind of do an end run around having to get a floodplain permit. And so essentially what you're doing is creating your, you're creating a dual system. So you're creating the system that's in this table where it allows people to, um, be exempted from critical areas review, including in special flood hazard areas or frequently flooded areas, whatever you want to call them. Um, and then you have the system in 18, 300, 093, which are the specific development standards that we're revising here tonight for development. which are the specific development standards that we're revising here tonight for development in the special flood hazard area. And those are saying two different things. The latter is saying, go get a floodplain permit and you, you have to comply with these development standards, including elevating your floor one foot above the base flood elevation, anchoring a manufactured home. It kind of just depends upon the use that you have. This, on the other hand, is saying, no, you don't have, you're exempt. You don't have to, you don't have to comply with those standards. So FEMA had a fundamental problem with, with this table. So their solution to this is to specify there as it shows you in, in highlight, outside the special flood hazard area. So at some future date, if La Center decides to, and I'm not completely sure why the city would do this, but to regulate areas beyond the special flood hazard area, such as the 500-year floodplain, for instance, or the channel migration zone would be another example. So the channel migration zone is an area along, for instance, a river such as the the East Fork, where the river over time changes course, you know, because it erodes the bank. And it might create an area outside the special flood hazard area that's not regulated. So in the future, the city could choose to regulate that area outside the special flood hazard area, but still deem it a frequently flooded area that they want to regulate. And then in that case, those exemptions in this table could apply. But within the special flood hazard area or the 100-year floodplain, which is the same thing, we have to comply by FEMA's requirements.
So there are no uses allowed in, in a special flood hazard area?
It's not that there's no uses allowed, it's just that they have to meet certain development standards, so again.
And where are those standards?
So that's in 18, 300, 093, which are the frequently flooded area regulations. So let me see if I can.
And that's fine. And what is the difference between a frequently flooded area and a special flood hazard area?
None in this case. The only difference is that the state of Washington, when you develop a critical areas ordinance, calls it frequently flooded areas, and FEMA calls it a special flood hazard area.
Well, but, you know, up here in applicability under activity, it says, if a frequently flooded areas is also designated a special flood hazard area, which leads me to believe they are two different things.
They're not. I mean, they're both the 100-year floodplain and the floodway. That's what the special flood hazard area is.
I think that's that can be confusing here.
So at this, so at this point, we have the, the changes, I would say like all the, the changes that we, we don't have a lot of input on. And then we have the ability to keep the CLOMAR verbiage that you've added or to leave it out. Do you guys have any, any other thoughts on those items? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and see if anyone virtually would like to, to speak up. We do have an open, open public hearing on this.
We have not previously opened a public hearing on this one.
Okay. If you, if you guys are good on this, then I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing on this. My, my mistake. I, we have some stuff open and closed. I need to log that better. So I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing on this. On the agenda, it's 1.73. It is the FEMA Updates Memo. And if you, if you'd like to comment virtually, just go ahead and unmute. And you would have three minutes to give your comment. Okay, hearing no public comment virtually. I will go to the in, in the physical meeting. And, and we have no public comment there. So hearing no public comment, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing.
Chair, I think there was a comment that was going to be read in.
Sorry, yes. We can go ahead and read that. That's, I kept bringing it up and then I, then I ended up forgetting it.
Yeah, this one's from Bonnie Sorin. We received notice of your pending code revisions and note that the comment period closes today, 9/12/23. Please be advised that NMFS has determined in consultation with FEMA on the NFIP that development in the floodway often has significant impacts to salmonid, salmonid habitat resources, water quality, prey, habitat complexity, river recharge and refugia, and to salmon growth, survival and recovery potential both in the Washington State and Oregon State. NMFS encourages that the types of development to be authorized under local code revisions be limited to open space uses, light recreation, agricultural uses, and silviculture, which are used, or which are uses that are more compatible salmonid conservation needs.
Okay, so who's that from? Wait, is it?
It is from Bonnie Sorin, Branch Chief, Washington Coast. Looks like she is with NOAA Fisheries.
Oh, no, okay.
Okay, and I, I don't know if she's here, but I thank her for the public comment. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing on this. And at, at this time, do we, do we have a motion? And you can phrase your motion to adopt all the changes as outlined by staff, including the CLOMAR, or you can make a motion where we leave the CLOMAR, I'll call it, language out?
I would make a motion that we accept the changes to the code as presented by staff. And also as part of that, cleaning up any initial, any definitions to make it clear throughout the, throughout the code. If we can clean that up as been brought up by our commissioner, Nuprock.
Do you want to include it, even concerning CLOMAR?
Yeah, including the CLOMAR. Yeah, that's, that's part of your, that's part of your presentation. Yes.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second for that motion?
A little second.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. Any discussion, any further discussion before we go to a vote? Going once, going twice. Okay, hearing no discussion, I'm going to go ahead and call the question. And I will start with Commissioner Jones this time.
Say yes.
I'll vote aye. Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Nuprock?
Yes.
All right, we have unanimous for yeses, the motion carries. Thank you, guys. That was, that was great.
Hallelujah.
Yeah, nice job. At this time, I don't believe we have any unfinished business. So I will roll right into new business. On this part of the agenda, any commissioner can bring forward any new business that you'd like to, to add?
Yeah, I apologize for my confusion on the agenda for somehow I picked up last meeting, was looking, was commenting on those. So I'm sorry about that.
No worries.
I think new business, I would like to see uncommissioned, put a letter together, if you would, Chair, to Jesse, thanking her for all the work she's done for the last several years here in support of the commission. She's been a big part of us, and I know that Brian and Ethan would agree with that. But it would be nice if we could acknowledge that with a nice little letter, perhaps signed by you, or maybe the mayor. Whatever, just as a thank you for, because she was an integral part of our, of our team.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I think we should do that. I don't even think that's like a, an item that's motionable. I'll just do it. So, yeah, I'll put that together and run it by, maybe I can bring it to the next meeting and you guys can bless it.
Well, you don't, just do it.
Just do it, okay. If you guys trust me with my bad, with my bad grammar. No, I'm kidding. I'll go, I'll go ahead and take that and we'll get the letter off to her. I'll stop by if you don't mind signing. Great, thanks. Any other new business at this time? All right. Ethan, we're going to just put the burden on you. And if you can go ahead and jump into our community development staff report, please.
I'm going to give Ethan a break and I'll take this one.
Okay.
Practice for tomorrow.
But I want Ethan to work more.
So, starting out the top, number one on the map here, Lockwood Meadows subdivision. As you've probably seen, if you've driven by that side, town is under construction. Storm, or excuse me, sewer, sanitary sewer is complete and storm construction is beginning now. You can see them right up front there, working on that pond, trying to get it final graded and seeded so we can get grass established prior to the rainy season hitting here. Minute management, number four on the map. Framing is continuing. Just got them approval today to continue some work on the roof out there. There was some change or in addition to, for a mechanical platform on the roof there. So they are moving full speed ahead out there. Let's see here, Ace's View, number 37 on the map. This is the subdivision that's directly adjacent to the middle school. Grading is underway there, and they're also beginning sewer construction on that project as well. We also had a few pre-applications come through. We had the Breezy Creek subdivision, which is what was? 67?
67.
Oh, yeah, 67, and that's a little infill subdivision, basically extending the Holly Park subdivision. So it's a relatively small one. We also had preliminary short plat come in, just splitting one lot into two. And then we had the Timmins Landing subdivision, which is out sort of surrounded by La Center Road, Pollock Road and Timmins Road, most of that area there. And they are looking at a combination of apartments and townhomes. So we will see, give them some comments. They have some challenging access to get all those people in and out of that area. So if they can figure that out and come forward, we will keep the planning commission apprised. Happy to answer any questions.
Question, Brad, on that, there, there's a number of different owners in that, in that block. Is there, have they appointed someone to be their spokesperson at this point?
So the project encompasses multiple parcels owned by two property owners. One of them is the Headleys and the other is the Barth. I'm totally spacing. It starts with a B and it's kind of broad water. Thank you. And this particular pre-application proposal was put together by G2, I think. They had a developer that was, that is, that would put together this proposal.
So they're working together, these two, two owners?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You know, another company, this, like, when we put together the MX code, I thought we had put some provisions in there for a trail around the bluff. And I, and I, I don't know if you remember that, Dennis. A trail around the bluff at Timmins Landing. And I went back and looked into code and I couldn't find it, but I think that was part of a, a subarea plan that we were notionally working on. The idea was to have, you know, we've got a great view area there along that bluff. We ought to be asking or telling the developer to put a trail along that bluff. What we, what we had envisioned was a couple places for, for benches. So we're protecting that view area overlooking the bottomlands. Now, I don't know if we have any leverage on that. But I think that would be something well worth trying to protect.
All right.
The other thing, I've heard rumors, you know how rumors are, but is the tribe trying to get involved in the minute management project?
I don't know that the city has that information at this point. I think there's, there's been ongoing conversations. There's a latecomer agreement between the two of them relating to sewer. But beyond that,
Okay.
we're not sure.
All right, Brian, are you, any other items on your?
Nope, that concludes the community development report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for that. I'm going to go ahead and jump into comments from planning commission. I'm going to change things up and start with Commissioner Jones. I'll turn to Commissioner.
This probably isn't related to this, but more out of curiosity, is that Breezy Creek, I mean, the road improvement, is that still just on hold or waiting to funding or what?
Yeah, so we are at 100% design on that. We actually just had a project meeting on it today. So design of the corridor is complete. We are wrapping up the environmental permitting, and we're currently just kicking off right-of-way acquisition, which was funded this year. We've, we've got, I think, three or four grants that are contributing to the construction, but it's about a $16 million total construction budget for that project. And I think we have about $4 million or so committed. One of those committed grants is a Safe Routes to School grant that we applied for specifically for the intersection of Fourth and Highland and Ivy, I think it is, to the south. Because there's a lot of pedestrian traffic there coming and going from the schools. That one does have a deadline, so we're actually working on sort of splitting that off into a project. The plan is to bid that project next year. And it likely won't actually start construction until 2025 because of the high lead time supply chain issues for signal and signal components. But basically, we want to get a contractor onboard, a price locked in, and get that equipment on order so that we can meet the deadline for that grant. And then we're going to continue to seek grant funding. We had a eight and a half million dollar federal culvert grant that we had applied for. Unfortunately, found out about a month or so ago, we didn't receive that, so we're going to go for that again. I think we have a strong project. And now I think we will be able to get some support from the tribe on as far as being even a co-applicant. And we've worked with the tribe to have a lot of the main roads in the city, including Fourth, added to their tribal inventory of roadways, which opens us up for additional funds potentially that are only available for tribes as well. So we have some options. We just got to get that $6 million or $16 million package put together. Oh, yes, we're also, I think tomorrow at the council meeting, we'll be getting a proposal from a federal lobbyist that can help us not only put together federal grant applications, but also then help us make the right connections to get support for those federal grant applications. And we also are working with the firm that will be helping us with other grants as well, grant writing for sort of non-federal grants, state and local. What's that? Yes, yeah, the, I should just turn over the mic. The, the, the grant writers have a 72% success rate. And I think the federal lobbyist has a similar success rate. I think they're, when they were talking to us, they said it was like a 30 to one match or return on investment. So, you know, for every dollar you spend with them, it's, I think it was actually more than that, it was like 60 to one.
The one that just got rich, it was $80,000 for that road that's going in front of 7-Eleven.
Yeah, that was me and them.
So we're going after those, those people tomorrow.
Very nice.
All right, so I only have one comment. I'd like to thank Mayor Tom for attending our meeting. It's, I'm glad you were able to find seating and you didn't have to stand up in the back like usual. You just got lucky. Commissioner Hill?
Yes, I think just, I appreciate the fact that the budget issues were brought to the fore. I think that's important. I think, you know, we're citizens of the city here and we're taxpayers, and this is our money as well. And just being aware of the, the situation, I think that we can work together as a team, along with WSP and Brian, to help do better going forward. I think we can be, we can be smarter. And having this as a carrot in front of us that says we can get, we can get as much done, maybe we can get done cheaper. And again, thank you again, Brian, for, Ethan, again, for all the work you've done. And we're going to support you, and I know you're going to support us. Thank you.
Two things, Brian, in the, the, that Breezy Creek development, 67, I think it is, why aren't they using Ivy as access to that?
Ivy, oops, I'm off. Ivy is a private road. So there's actually an adjoining property owner to the north that they would have to acquire right-of-way from to be able to make that connection. So I think that's the primary reason.
So we're going to funnel all that traffic through the existing development?
Yeah, that, as the road was stubbed there.
You know, again, I, you know, this is another instance where I think the city ought to be looking out for the citizens and forcing those kind of issues to get resolved. I'll leave it at that.
Isn't, sorry to interrupt, but isn't there also additionally a culvert? Isn't, sorry to interrupt, but isn't there also additionally a culvert that would have to be upgraded to make the Ivy connection? And it would be fairly expensive to do that. Yeah.
Yeah, but you're, you're forcing, you know, you're not, you're not looking out for the citizens, you know. Funneling all that traffic through the existing development doesn't make sense when you've got Ivy right there that you could provide access. The other thing is, I voted against the, the density transfer because I think there's some, still some issues with that code. If you would like to discuss those, I'd be happy to do that. If not, I think there's problems with that code.
Fair enough.
That's it.
Appreciate it. Alex, I don't know if you control the, the agenda. I might have the next two items removed from future agendas. 112, 113, we just deal with offline through texts and stuff like that. So we'll just go ahead and move through those. And with that said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We got a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, you all. Appreciate you guys.
What's, do you know what's the agenda for next, next month?